Without any additional considerations, just based on the future land use map staff's opinion is to deny the request. It's not necessarily public comment, but I did just today also receive a letter from the current tenants of the residence expressing that while they're not the property owners and she can do as she wished with the home, they said they're very happy in their current home and wish to remain there and wish it to remain residential. With that, I'll conclude the report.
Thank you, Mr. Gortos. At this time, we'll open it up for public comment.
Do I need to go there?
Please.
We live, I'm Margie and David Gustafson, we live at 507 South Main Street, so we're right beside that house, and we would prefer for it to stay residential. We're concerned that the noise and the traffic and what might come in beside us, because there's going to have to be parking if it's a medical office, and what might happen with property values and just the effect on the neighborhood in general.
Yeah, I agree with just keep it a family neighborhood as it is. There's no commercial property on that side of the street, and we would prefer to keep it that way.
Thank you.
Anything else?
Any other public comment? Okay, seeing none, we will move on to board discussion. Just like that, before the information.
Yeah.
How about your last one?
I don't know. Yeah.
For anything?
Someone made the motion?
I'm gonna.
Yeah, I agree, if they're not willing to do the extra work, then I think it's not, no need to table it if we already got 30 days to get it.
Okay, we have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Aye. All those opposed? Ayes aye. We shall move on to our next item, which is FI-2022-010. This is an annex and rezone to I-1 Industrial District for tax maps ending 0100 and 0200. This is approximately 105.6 acres at Fairview Street Extension and North Nelson Drive. We will now hear from our applicant Armstrong Farm LLC.
Good afternoon, my name is Price Cameron, I'm with Hughes Commercial Properties, and we're the developer working on this project, so just to be clear, I'm out with Armstrong to want to be here to represent. I also had some dental work just a little while ago, and had worn off when trying to bite my tongue off. But I am morally willing to help answer any questions that y'all have, and we certainly appreciate your time and consideration of our request.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we'll hear our city staff report, Mr. Gortos.
Yes, Chairman, members of the commission, second docket number is FI-2022-10. The current property owner is Armstrong Farm LLC and Armstrong Farm and Dairy LLC. This is the Armstrong Farm property, this has been agricultural for some time, that's prominently located off of Fairview Street Extension and North Nelson Drive, just off of Interstate 385. The proposed annexation rezoning with annex 1.5, or excuse me, 105 acres, with two tax map numbers into the city limits of Fountain Inn, the municipal corporate limits, and rezoned the property from its RS residential kind of placeholder zoning in Greagle County to I-1 Industrial District. We've talked a lot about properties in this vicinity in the past, much of those have gone residential, and at one point, that was our anticipation for this property as well. However, with Hughes and other interests, they're now seeking to annex the city as an industrial property. And then with 105 acres, there's obviously quite a bit of room for several structures. The adjacent land uses are mixed, there are industrial and residential in this area, given its frontage, Saudi Plant is a good example of a nearby industrial property, as well as the South Chase Industrial Park is adjacent. The zoning is much more mixed, if it's in the city, it's typically zoned FRD or Flexible Review District for subdivisions within the city limits of Fountain Inn. If they're in the county, they're either zoned that residential suburban zoning, or sometimes even unzoned, which I'll show you in a map in a second. Again, there's two adjacent properties to this large tract that are in the city and are zoned for that FRD category, which is a residential zoning, but there are industrial zones nearby, and in fact, our 2017 master plan indicated that this parcel is suitable for industrial. So to be clear, this proposal and proposed annexation and rezoning to industrial is consistent with our 2017 master plan and future land use map. You can see here in the exhibit the size of the parcel, city limits are denoted in the shaded color, so it is adjacent on two sides. It's also next to several residential areas, either in the county or in the city, and so should this be developed in an industrial manner, there's some screening and buffering that will be required to protect these residences from the impacts of industrial use. You can also see that there is significant zoning for that industrial category, that purple color nearby, so it's not necessarily add character despite its location. Our future land use map, again, shows this area in purple, which indicates that industrial uses are appropriate at this location. You can see that the current character is primarily just agricultural rural fields. There's several homes, dwellings on the property, as well as agricultural use. The location or the use of those homes is still being determined, if they'll be moved, saved, or not saved. In this case, it's all dependent on the development of the property. Staff recommends approval for the request, A would add 105 acres to the existing city limits, that's directly contiguous to us, as the city is annexed property, we want our properties to make sense and to be contiguous to each other, this would fill the gap, so to speak, in terms of city limits. Also, industrial is a more healthy tax base typically for our municipality than residential, so we want a diversity of land uses, we don't want to annex just residential land, we want commercial and industrial in our city limits as well.
Thank you, Mr. Gortos. All right, we'll open this up for public comment.
Good evening, thank you for the planning commission allowing me to speak, my name is Shannon Canuti, I live at 214 Crossing Ten Way in McDowell Plantation, my house is at the tail end that touches this farm. This morning, I walked outside by Brown Porch, and I purposely listened to the frogs and the birds in the backyard, because I am fearful that I may not hear them for much longer as a result of this proposed zoning change. I grew up in St. Smithville, but my grandmother lived in a tiny house on Given Street in Fountain Inn, right behind the old Wilson Plant, and my dad grew up in Fountain Inn and told me stories about living here in the 1560s. When my husband and I decided to move back to the area 17 years ago, we chose to build our family home for our three girls in quaint Fountain Inn, so we'd pass by cows and green space every day on the way home from work. I know that change in growth is inevitable, and some change is good. I dare say that everyone in Fountain Inn really appreciates the revitalization of Main Street, the fun festivals, love all the new fast food places, I mean Burger King and the plot drive in were great, but we always need a little bit of change. But often, it's the little things that never seem to be taken into consideration when making the type of large-scale changes that are being proposed right now. In the past year or so, we have had three new subdivisions start construction within a two-mile radius of our house, which is a smaller townhouse neighborhood off of Fairview Street, that's also on the agenda tonight, a large townhouse and single-family home development off Wilson Beach Road, and a huge one off of Highway 418 that's directly across from Highway 651 that leads right into our neighborhood. Our little tiny neighborhood of 36 homes, as well as a few other well-established homes with a significant amount of land, are basically becoming an island, surrounded by developments that seem to strip the land of trees and put as many houses as possible on these plots of land. Ever since this construction began, we've seen an increase in the number of deer and wild turkeys that come into our yard via the Armstrong Farm, because they're being run out of wherever they used to live. Additionally, we have a creek that runs through our backyard that starts by a creek on the Armstrong Farm. Our dog plays in this, so I worry that building some industrial something or another, what effect that's going to have on what's left of my property. I'm not a huge animal rights activist or anything, but these animals that are being displaced do play a part in our ecosystem, and with our newer neighborhoods not keeping many large trees, it seems that we're forgetting the natural impact that all this construction has had on the overall nature scape in our area. Traffic and noise is another huge concern for me with these new neighborhoods and the proposed industrial rezoning. If you've ever driven down Fairview Street going toward 418, it's a little two-lane road. It's already got enough traffic with the 18-wheelers that are coming to the new warehouse that already exists on 418. The trucks sometimes will cut through Highway 651, which leads into our neighborhood, they fly, because it's an easy cut-through, and they can bypass the four-way stop at 418. Once those new neighborhoods all get enforced, that's 1,000 new people running up and down those little tiny roads. As I said before, I don't think that growth or change is a bad thing, but I believe that many Fountain Inn residents would agree with me that we are changing too quickly without having the infrastructure to handle the populations, traffic, school needs, noise, and the destruction of nature that comes along with the growth that has occurred at such a tremendously rapid pace. On a personal note, when we built our house back in 2005, we always knew that someday the Armstrong Farm, the Armstrong family might sell the land, but I always imagined that it would be a lovely residential development, because it's such a beautiful property. If you have never done so, I encourage you to drive by the farm tonight, it's two miles from here, and take a look at the sunset. My daughters have all taken pictures in that field, I know that the Armstrong family has had a wedding there, they have been to reunions there. It's truly stunning, and as you drive by tonight, enjoy that beautiful, peaceful, quiet view of God's glory. I want you to instead picture a giant set of mammoth yielding warehouses with loading docks, no grass, barely any trees, and black asphalt. Then you tell me what type of zoning needs to be there to keep Fountain Inn as the in-place to be. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Gentlemen, my name is Lawrence Baugh, I live at the, just to the east of the previous speaker, I'm her neighbor. I have lived there now, I built my house in 2000, so I've lived there now 22 years. I've grown accustomed to this quiet neighborhood, which I realized at the time I bought my lot, that it's not always going to be that way. I ask you to consider zoning of, that you're about to award, is our understanding this is going to become zoned for large warehouses. Gentlemen, we're looking at just lights, trucks, noise, and traffic, and you have to consider with the subdivision that is now underway directly across Fairview Street, and it's going to have, going to gain, I think something like 60 homes when they're all constructed. The infrastructure is not being improved to that, or to support the heavy truck traffic that this facility is guaranteed to generate. So I ask you to think very carefully about your approval of this as a trucking facility. We deserve better than that. Thank you.
Anybody else?
Hi, I'm Dana Garrus, I couldn't let my neighbors talk without me speaking too, so they spoke so eloquently, I just want to say, I encourage you to do what Shannon Canuti asked you to do, drive by there tonight, consider the people of Fountain Inn, why we moved to Fountain Inn, before you make a decision. It's a big decision, it's a lasting decision, I don't want to be in your shoes by any means, but we moved here for that sense of community, we have that community, so that's all I ask you to do. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, seeing none, we will move on to board discussion. Wall, any comment?
Yeah, my concern is just, again, that it's buffered by both ends of residential to the north and to the south, and so that's my concern, I've seen, but also know that it crawls from the other side of that, but that is more industrial, and I can, I know the industrial all the way around, that's right by the highway. There's a part of me that's in limbo, just being buffered and sandwiched in between two residential areas is a concern.
Any other comments?
Something that makes the infrastructure, I'm sure we probably need some more information about how it's.
Well, this is purely a decision on his designation, I think we don't need to decide what, I know, which is.
Does anyone have a motion?
I think because this is our decision, but because it is consistent with the 17 master plan, then it's consistent with the master plan, so I'll make that motion.
Do I have a second? That's fine, I'll make the second. All those in favor? Aye. All those opposed?
Aye.
Split. All right, move on to the next item. FI-2022-011, this is a major change to Foxtail Cottages on tax map ending 0302, approximately 10.39 acres, at Fairview Street Extension and Old Fairview Road, we'll hear from Foxtail Developers LLC.
Good evening, my name's Todd Ustel, I'm the developer on Foxtail Cottages, and this is basically our final development plan, where last time we were here, five items, one of the elements with those items were asked to be done prior to this meeting, one was move the sidewalk from one side of the road to the other, additional screening, and we've satisfied all those with our final development plan that we submitted to Mr. Gortos.
Thank you. I guess we will hear from Mr. Gortos at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, this is technically considered a major change to the final development plan, and that impacts the final layout of the subdivision as it's shown on the screen before you. However, when you typically think of a major change as a change in density, a decrease in landscaping, et cetera, in this case, final development plans are supposed to show you exactly what is going to be constructed, and when this property was rezoned, there were several contingencies or conditions placed on the property, recommended by staff and approved by the planning commission. Some of those conditions were to reflect screening that protects the residential neighborhood from the nearby industrial plant, you're saying that in with an opaque structure, landscaping, to amend the tree protection plan, there were previously more trees protected, upon visiting a site those were lost, and so we put conditions that heavy landscaping along both roadways was required to compensate for that. That hot lot, fire pit, and park amenity area details to be submitted for our city staff for review, that's also included here, basically, they denoted amenity areas, but we didn't know what were in them, or if they're beneficial to the neighborhood, and so those exhibits have been provided to you to show exactly what amenities will be available, and makes this a flexible review district. HOA documents reflect no sanitation service on Tibetan Trailer Blanford Road, those are the internal roads, are, speaking with our public works director, that has been rectified, and additional five-foot sidewalk placed in front of lots 17 through 28 along Fennec Drive. In this case, they essentially flipped the side of the road where those sidewalks would be located, they're previously on the far right or east side in front of homes with driveways in the front, whereas these houses in the middle have their front porch facing the street and their garage's in the back, and so it didn't make a lot of sense from a pedestrian-friendly standpoint to have the houses with front yards not have sidewalk in front, and so that sidewalk has been moved, and now every house that has a front-facing porch has sidewalk access as well to the front door. The most notable change from your document, from a visual standpoint, is the tree spacing, so the heavy landscaping along both roadways is still there, it's just they hired an arborist to assist with the planting, before it was just one large can for tree and one large understory tree, this reflects the arborist's recommendations on more plant diversity and better survivability of the plants that are shown there. So this exhibit just shows the landscape details at the entrance in certain locations, so denoting the exact tree species that will be used. This is just your information on what species those are, where they're planted, and what quantity, and how they're going to protect the trees, and the way that they plant them. Correct, one slide, but there's, the last page shows the actual amenities, descriptions of the playground, descriptions of the dog park, and descriptions of the pocket park where the mailbox cluster, the USPS mail cluster would go. In short, this is just additional detail on a development you've already approved, but it's important that the planning commission knows exactly what is built at this location, and this provides those additional details for your consideration. Staff recommends we just accept these, because these were the conditions set by the board prior.
Thank you, Mr. Gortos. Okay, we'll open it up for public comment. Okay, seeing none, board discussion? I don't see any problem with this.
Yeah, no, I appreciate the detail and what you've put in, that's really helpful in us being able to see those, not only details, it's a big, a big lot set of questions.
It's gonna stay after the initial discussion.
Yep, yep. Drop a motion? Second?
Second.
All right, all is in favor? Then we accept these? Aye. All disposed? Ayes aye. All right, next item. FI-2022-013, this is a rezoned R12 Residential District, tax maps ending 06100 and 06101, this is approximately .8 acres at 202 In Circle and 204 In Circle, we'll hear from our applicant Karen McKelvey.
Karen McKelvey, I own two rental houses on In Circle, I also live on In Circle. The two houses in question, there is, actually, it's three lots, it's less than an acre, and I'd like to downsize one day and have a house in between those two houses. That is my reason, and the reason I'm asking now is 202 house, if you will look at the area with open eyes, you can see there can be another house there and not be crowded, and I don't think it would damage anybody's, the price of anybody's property.
Thank you, Ms. McKelvey.
Appreciate that.
Thank you. All right, we'll hear our city staff report from Mr. Gortos.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, members of the planning commission, thank you. Unfortunately, I've noticed the typographical error on your staff reports, so please forgive me and forgive me, audience, this is located at 202 and 204 In Circle. The existing zoning is R15 residential, R15 meaning that the lots should be 15,000 square feet or more and have 60 feet of frontage, this is our largest lot size available in the city of Fountain Inn, much of Main Street is on this R15 designation. Ms. McKelvey's request is to rezon to R12 residential zoning, meaning that the lot size would be slightly smaller at 12,000 square feet or more. As it is yesterday, and it's shown on the screen, based on that R15 designation, you can only fit two houses with the combined size of those two lots, in order to subdivide a third lot out of there, the property would need to be rezoned to allow for smaller lot sizes. The existing land use is residential, these are, these are single-family homes, they're surrounded by single-family homes in the In Circle neighborhood, which is just off of Main Street, and the adjacent zoning is R15 on all four sides. This property is accessed basically one way in, one way out, off Weston Street, and so this is not a heavily trafficked or frontage road. We have had rezoning requests in the past for smaller lot sizes in our downtown area or historic Fountain Inn, the primary justification for that has been that the lot sizes were already quite small, and the zoning was just a change to make it fit the existing character of the neighborhood in Circle. You can see here, it's completely zoned R15, there's no R12 or any other zoning surrounding it. So our future land use map, again, that's just showing in the light yellow color that medium to low density residential is appropriate, that means R12 or R15. And the primary consideration for staff's recommendation on this was not only the future land use map, but the existing character of the area. The best example I could give is a rezoning that took place on Quillan Avenue not too many months ago, where a property was zoned from R15 to a lower zoning category. That was based on its archerial status as Quillan Avenue, and also based on surrounding homes and the lot sizes there, and many of those houses were quite small, and the lots were quite small already, and so that house, to be constructed, was matching the character of that part of Quillan Avenue. In this case, on In Circle, many of these lots are quite large already, they do fit the constraints of R15 zoning, being 15,000 square feet or more, there's not many small lots existing on In Circle already. So based on those two criteria, the surrounding zoning of R15, and the large lot sizes surrounding that neighborhood, and the fact it is fairly isolated, not on a busy road where higher density is appropriate, staff's recommendation is denial at this time for the request to zone R12.
Thank you, Mr. Gortos, we'll open up floor for public comment.
My name is Fallon Price, and I reside at 208 In Circle, and I also own 206 In Circle, so next door. I wanted to say that we are opposed, many of the residents, to rezoning, we love that In Circle is so unique and special with our larger lots, as evidenced by the Christmas, you know, the curators that come in through the circle, it's just a unique, such a sanctuary for walkers and runners and children riding their bikes, it's one way in, one way out, it's just very special, and I think to chop up the lots and cram in more houses would not be a great way to preserve that. And I wanted to just say that there are lots of In Circle residents here that agree with us, if you'd like to stay and just say that you support not rezoning.
Not rezoning.
Not rezoning, as anything less than R15, we would appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak? Seeing none, we'll move on to board discussion.
Yeah, I think, for me, it's pretty, pretty straight. Yeah, I think for me it's pretty, pretty straight. And yeah, it got to.
Any other comment?
I think it would say, for lack of a better word, horrible president.
President, thank you. All right, I would like to make the motion that we deny this R twelve request. Do I have a second?
Awesome.
All those in favor of denial of the R twelve request? Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Eyes out. We'll move on to our next item, FI twenty twenty-two dash oh one four. This is a rezone to RM residential multifamily. This is tax map ending oh one zero zero two, approximately point eight point seven acres along Nash Street and Gen three avenue. We'll hear from our applicant Beeson Development.
Good evening, how are you tonight?
Good.
I'm Melanie Giles, I'm Blue Water Civil Design representing Mr. Joey Beeson. And what we're trying to do here is just a small community as a transition in between the industrial and residential in the area. This is a property that is right across the street from South Grove. And then on Main Street, it would be just a little bit nicer look to Main Street to kind of clean everything up and bring it up into this day and age. Do you have any questions?
Thank you, appreciate that. We'll now hear our city staff report from Mr. Gortos.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is docket number FI twenty twenty-two dash zero one four. And the applicant Beeson Development and the property location off of Nash Street and Gen three avenue. This is on the Lawrence County side of Fountain Inn, again off somewhat off of South Main Street. The acreage for this parcel is currently wooded land and it's zoned eight. It's eight point seven acres zoned R twelve residential district, which is single family. The tax map number is nine oh four oh two oh one zero zero two. It's essentially just across from the Gen three facility and across from the South Chase residential subdivision that's currently under construction. Adjacent land uses are primarily single family residential being the tax houses, but there is that large industrial entity next door. Up and down Nash Street is an area of transition. South Grove obviously transitioned the area more towards residential. But there are existing warehouses here and on Woods Drive on the frontage road. And as you get, go down Nash towards four eighteen, obviously that is transitioning to a commercial area, but it's still that industrial character. Our future land use map for this property recommends medium to low density residential. Again, that's R fifteen or R twelve. The requested zoning from the applicant is RM, which is residential multifamily. And their stated intended land use is to build a townhome development. So RM zoning is a traditional buy right zone. So if this was zoned RM, they could build single family houses, they could build duplexes, they could build townhomes, or they could even build a apartment multifamily structure. So know that just because the applicant has stated that they wish to build townhomes, they can, they have a variety of land use options available to them if this is rezoned. And speaking with the developer, they do appear sincere in that that's what they want to do. And that's what they find is most profitable for the property is a townhome style development where you separate the lots out. They've provided a site plan again, just for reference, but their intended land use is townhomes at this location. So the important consideration then is how the staff make that fit into the neighborhood. This exhibit shows the current status of the property and its surrounding land uses. You can see that it's, that the subdivision's across the street that's under construction. So many of those houses are closing now, but that is a brand new subdivision. The other exhibit is your zoning map. So South Grove is zoned R ten. The industrial properties are zoned I one. This is zoned R twelve, which is that lighter yellow color. But across the street, most notably is Sanctified Hill, which is zoned RM, which is the same request made by the applicant. So there is multifamily zoning directly adjacent to this property, making it a unique circumstance. There is a number of properties on RM in the Lawrence County side. There's Fountain Inn property, apartment complex just down the road. But a lot of these properties on RM are actually just single family homes that have the option to be rented. So there's a variety of land uses under that RM category. And again, if the applicant is granted that request, they have a number of ways they can develop the parcel. This future land use map shows the area and it's obviously an area with differences just across the street or as you go up and down the road. You can see that the, for multifamily, that's recommended above this site, medium low density on the site and industrial just around the site. So our future land use map is pretty clear that this is an area in transition even in twenty seventeen. We knew that there'd be a variety of uses here. You can see the existing conditions, the subdivision across the street being under construction, the wooded nature of the parcel now. The railroad tracks, which will impact any development at this location. But also the fact that it's visible off of South Main Street. It's a fairly prominent site where it's located. Again, this property was recommended for lower density residential. Multifamily allows for high density residential. So this does not, is not consistent with our future land use map. So there must be extraordinary or additional circumstances to justify going against that. In staff's case, this is the fact that it's directly adjacent to a number of properties that are zoned RM. This would be a continuation of that zoning and be consistent. It's also that while staff is not necessarily in favor of the pretty prominent amount of townhomes and multifamily developments that have occurred in the city limits the past couple of years. None of those have occurred in Lawrence County or this portion of town. This hasn't, this area hasn't seen as much investment as areas along Harrison Bridge Road or Main Street. So while we have concerns with certain types of developments in areas of our town that are growing too fast, this part of town is not one of them. And so we are seeking some investment on the property in there. We're seeking a townhome type development. Based on that consideration, just specifically its location on Main Street, Nash Street, which is growing residential. And its prominent visibility in that location on Lawrence County. Staff recommends approval of multifamily for this particular site based on its adjacency to other multifamily zones. Again, this is a buy right zone, so we can't say that we're voting for townhomes or for apartments. They just have a number of those options that they can choose. And it's important that this board supports that decision. Staff ensures that the product is what the community is looking for.
Thank you, Mr. Gortos. We will now have a public comment period. Seeing none, we'll move on to board discussion. Oh, sorry, my apologies.
I was gonna give somebody a chance to go first.
All good?
I'll go anyway.
All good.
Okay. My name's Robert Howard, I'm an agent with the Jennifer Richardson Company. One of the, unlike a lot of people that come here to speak on behalf of projects, I actually, while I live in Greenville, I do own property. Second Street, not very far from here. So I have, I have skin in the gang. And I believe this is a good use for the property and that, you know, it'll help with walkability. You know, the ability to get to downtown from this area is, for some Americans, might, might not be the most comfortable walk, especially in July and August. But, you know, you know, you can do it. So I just wanted to voice my support.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Any other comment?
I'm Joey Beeson, the applicant. I don't really have a whole lot to add, but I just wanted to introduce myself and just remind y'all that although asking for RM, I do understand that that does provide a lot of options. Our interest is for townhomes and I mean, we think that that would be of benefit to the area. When y'all were looking at the zoning workup earlier, a lot of people were mentioning, you know, we're in a single family and now we've got industrial. Well, we actually do have industrial beside us here and then single family on the other side. So what we're asking to do is actually be that buffer. And because you've got a tremendous amount of industrial on that, on Main Street on that side of town. And I don't necessarily know if that's conducive to what y'all are really trying to ultimately do. But that's really, I mean, that's really all that, if you have any answering questions that you can. Just offer our sincere, I mean, that is our ability to do townhomes like that. Overall density is what we're looking at would, would only be in a, you know, another unit or two above what the R ten allows anyway.
Any questions for him?
Nope.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Any others? Okay, seeing none, we shall transition into board discussion.
How did I learn that Sanctified Hill is more than, you know?
Yep.
Yeah, I think it's kind of the opposite of, this is a bridge in between the new division subdivision of Nash coming across and then connecting with Main Street. And as we know, that side of Main Street needs, I think, a lot more investments. So for me, it seems like it's a good, a good plan for the development of that side of the city.
Am I putting that?
Yeah. I agree.
Do we have a motion?
On the, I'm not sure if we approve.
Second.
I'll second.
All those in favor? Aye. All disposed? Eyes out. All right. Next, we have FI twenty twenty-two dash zero one five. This is a rezone to S one services district, tax map ending oh nine oh four, approximately five point three acres along Northwoods Drive and Georgia Street. We'll hear from our applicant Barry Woods, Jr.
We were looking to rezone our property to the S one service district. We've had several inquiries on our property that have are flexible on if they meet the requirements where we're now commercial. Which would help us in the future investments in that area that I think would be beneficial to the city also in our tax base. And we're surrounded by nothing but other commercial and industrial properties there. There's no homes that join us that would just give us a little more flexibility. And I wouldn't have to be bothering Brady every week asking, can we do this and can we do that? Well, we would appreciate your consideration and your blessing on it.
Thank you, Mr. Woods. We'll now hear our city staff report from Mr. Gortos.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. This is docket number FI twenty twenty-two dash zero one five to rezone the five point three acre parcel from its current C two commercial zoning to S one services district. S one meaning that it's a transition between commercial uses and industrial uses. Typically, industrial uses are those categorized as I one, which we've discussed in other cases today, is where the most amount of land uses could take place. And the city Fountain Inn's case, it's the zone where only industrial manufacturing, like industrial or making of things is permitted. So it's not something where you can dump just anything in there. S one is kind of that bridge category and there is a multitude of land uses that are permitted there, including industrial uses and commercial uses. And then as this board has worked over the past two years to clean up, our C two commercial district, which was previously very broad, has been tightened up to increase aesthetics, prohibit certain land uses and limit them to the S one or I one district. So that our Main Street and four eighteen corridor is primarily sales and services and not just miscellaneous industrial or outdoor storage land uses. So as the parcels right now, it's a large firebaker tract and it's somewhat industrial in nature and seeking that S one category to better match that existing character. Adjacent land uses are commercial, residential and some industrial properties. Adjacent zoning is primarily still C two, but there is some industrial properties within a couple of blocks. And we've talked about this, this area, the not sedentary path, so I'll highlight that in your staff report as well. This is the location of the property just off of three eighty-five, the frontage road, West Georgia, or excuse me, Georgia Street, et cetera. So this is a prominent site just off of the Fairview Street interchange. This parcel contains a car dealership or service station, some sales of automotive or work trailers on a portion of the site. And then the back portion is primarily gravel lot that's not being utilized at this time. Adjacent land uses are things like Hardee's, a car wash, just industrial storage and utility building, bars, restaurants. It's a real hodgepodge out there. And that's what we're trying to address with both our previous zoning case and this one as well. What is this area trying to be and what is it transitioning from or to? You can see to the north is Triple M facility and other heavy manufacturing sites. So there is industrial very close proximity to this. This shows your zoning, so again, it's surrounded by C two on most sides, but industrial is very close by. And you can see that one S one property that was recently rezoned by the planning commission and city council, which is nearby. Our future land use map just generally states commercial. S one is kind of one of those that depending on the land use, you can call it industrial or you can call it commercial. It's either shown in purple or shown in red. So with a variety of land uses, S one is our most versatile zoning category for the amount of things you can do. Primarily in this highlighted at the end of your report, S one allows for outdoor storage and it allows for a parking lot. So for its current C two zoning, you can't park things there, you can't use it primarily for a parking lot and you can't have outdoor storage there. It's the primary land use. If it was zoned S one, you could park things there, you could have outdoor storage. These are the current conditions of the site. You can see it's just a gravel lot and it's not being utilized at this time. And it has a variety of frontages. This exhibit is fairly similar to one from the previous zoning case, talking about how this is an area of transition and flux. It's zoned for commercial use, but that has limited the use of some of these properties where they have an industrial feel. But the land uses that these property owners are seeking are not available in C two zoning. And so something more industrial or S one would allow them to better utilize these tracks, which are currently vacant. That comes with trade offs. So if you allow a greater number of land uses, that's a greater variety of things that may be aesthetically unattractive or not projecting the image, particularly with that high visibility that the city wants. That's why we cleaned up C two commercial zoning in the first place to make sure the land use is going in, projected a good image of the city and its uses. However, based on our previous conversations and looking at this property, it's pretty clear what its character is. It's not going to be a restaurant at any time. This is a transitional zone for freight and its visibility off the freeway. With that, this exhibit here shows how large the tract is and kind of the two character areas of the parcel. The area in the back, it's gravel, it's clearly away from the interstate, it's not very visible. It's primarily frontages off of Georgia Street and it better fits the industrial character of the area. The former dealership building in the front is incredibly visible off three eighty-five and presents a strong image of Fountain Inn as you're going up and down the freeway. So the applicant has requested S one zoning for the entire property. I think S one makes sense for a good majority of the property, but I'd really hate to see that prime frontage of our city allow for the things that we've tried to zone away, which is outdoor storage or a lot of freight vehicles at that location that aren't selling anything, they're just parking things or storing things. And so with that, staff's recommendation at this time is to allow for rezoning the back portion. In this case, it's two point three six acres, but try to keep the front as C two commercial. This may require holding the item to negotiate that with the property owner to get exact measurements of where those properties are. But at this time, staff's recommendation is to hold or amend the request so that a majority of the property. so that a majority of the property can be zoned S1 to meet that, change the character of the area, but that the road frontage along 385 be preserved and stay C2 commercial.
Okay. Any questions for Mr. Gordos? All right. Thank you, Greg. We will open this up for public comment.
Speak again?
Sure.
We don't have a problem with that at all. The, the front part is a display area, a commercial garage area, vehicle sales and trailer sales. As long as that is permitted in that area, we don't have a problem in dividing the back section of it to the S1 right here. So I'm happy with that. And if Greg more fussing to discuss this, we will, we will go along with that.
Thank you, Mr. Woods. Board discussion?
Yeah, I just, I didn't realize that was something that kind of could be suggested.
Right.
The art of compromise. Yeah, right on the spot, you know, so.
Well, if that's the case, then I will make the motion that we follow staff's recommendation to approve approximately the 2.36 acres that is along Georgia Street to be S1 and keeping front side of that on Northwoods Commercial. Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Aye. All those opposed? The ayes, ahs. All right. And our last item on the docket tonight is FI 2022-018. This is a rezone to S1 Services District, tax map ending 0104, approximately 2.39 acres at 290 McCarter Road. We'll hear from our applicant, Bryant Sims, Zippler LLC. Anybody here? Okay, seeing none here, we will hear our city staff report from Mr. Gordos.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll keep this one fairly quick and simple. This is the post office property at 290 McCarter Road. For whatever reason, this property is considered split zone. It has two zoning categories, and it's right down the middle in a diagonal motion. So there's the post office, there's a vacant parcel or underutilized parcel fronting 418. This is the zoning of the property. It's got some industrial and some S1 zoning. That would obviously make it difficult to redevelop the front portion as a property. The building may be in one zoning category and a portion of the property may be in another, restricting land use. The applicant is property owner, seeking to market that front portion. And in order to better market that, it's going to need consistent zoning to be able to sell that to investors. And so the existing zoning is S1 and I-1 split in that manner, and they're requesting just to consistently zone it S1, as discussed in the previous case. S1 is our most flexible zoning category in terms of the number of land uses allowed. And so that's why they'd like to keep it S1. And looking at our zoning map here, C2 would be a better fit, but S1 zoning allows for just as many uses as C2 does, and it allows for all the uses permitted in the C2 zone. So whatever you could do in that commercial zone, you could do in this property as well. It's intended that the future use of that parcel in the front would be some kind of commercial use. But that, staff recommends approving, fixing the zoning and getting it consistently S1.
The first 300 feet would fit into the gateway corner overlay?
That's correct, yes. So even if they redevelop the front, it's still subject to a zoning overlay. So there's going to be design improvements or design requirements for any development, regardless if it's zoned S1, I-1, or anything else.
Thank you, Mr. Gordos. We'll open this up for public comment. Seeing none, board discussion?
That was my only question, that it fitted to the gateway.
That was going to be my question, too. Thanks, y'all. Any other discussion we need to have on this? Seems pretty cutting, right?
Yep.
Make a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
All those in favor? Aye. All those opposed? The ayes, ahs. And with that, we shall adjourn.